Duh, I'm just giving shit.
I don't care if you're not keeping your space.
Yeah.
Fall on her back.
Yeah. I could always tell it was you, Bill, even if I couldn't see. So if they're not on a smartphone, they just do the dial star nine?
Yeah.
If they're not on the smartphone?
Yep, that would, uh, that would raise their hand.
Can we do the pledge of allegiance first before we start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Okay, Mayor Westbury.
Yes.
Bower.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman, Reese.
Yes.
On any public forum.
I don't see. No, no hands.
No, okay. There is a consent agenda. Any additional corrections?
No.
Those to approve, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Boltman.
Yep.
Bower.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-five is property up by the land, Doc?
Yeah, so this is a A twelve High Street. And what this does is put some, just more, more, very more, much more precise about the guidelines surrounding the sale. And meeting all the requirements then about telling when we'll do a public hearing and then all this other stuff about, again, just making sure that the public sale is very legal. I've highlighted some certain things on this, and Dave, just jump, jump in when you, when you got stuff, okay? But I just want to run through the highlights with you. It starts on page five. We would saw this through sealed bids. Bids due Friday, May one, at one o'clock. There is a notice in the paper this week, it'll come out on Wednesday, that has that bid letting time on it, and, and says that, you know, it's a, it's a sealed bid, you gotta tear the house down in forty-five days, it'll say that. And that the bidder needs to contact me to get this resolution before they could submit the bid, because there are some, some other items in here that we want to go through and have some significant discussion on some of the points with it, because we're not, we're not just absolutely married to the thing as it's written. You want to make some changes, we can't. Okay? The highlights then at the top of page six, titles conveyed via quick claim deed. Bottom of the page there mentions the stipulation about demolishing the house. House must be demolished within forty-five days of, and we want to clarify this, Dave, about whether that's forty-five days of the sale or forty-five days of the delivery of the deed.
Be forty-five from the delivery of the deed, but it wouldn't take long to deliver the deed once you accept the bid.
Yep. Uh, next page, on page seven, it sets a minimum bid on that, it's fifteen hundred dollars. And that is roughly the, the city's cost, as far as what the legal fees have been, and then a little bit of administration, and it would run around fifteen hundred dollars. Then we get into some, again, some stipulations on, on the subsequent transfers. Fourteen, that the, whoever the successful bidder is, they shall not assign or transfer the contract to sale without approval of the city council. Okay? So, and so the way this reads, the successful bidder, no matter when, they might go to sell this, they'd need to come get approval from the city council that they could sell it. And, and then that would, would release that.
Even after they've acquired the deed?
Yeah. And that's, that stays on there basically forever then, Dave, is that right?
Well, no, it'll be during the term of the contract of the sale. Once we quit claim deed to them, then, and they supply, and they comply with the restrictive covenants, which would be removing the structure, then they can transfer without restriction.
So then we wouldn't have to approve it as of now?
Right, correct.
It becomes theirs.
Right.
Page eight, in the middle of page item seventeen. No sale shall be made to any person, nor shall said person be permitted to bid who prior to the sale owns other property in the city that is a nuisance property. And item B, no person who was the previous owner of the property to be sold will be permitted to bid. I guess that's the one that I really want to make sure that everybody's on board with.
I thought, I thought I was told earlier that he could bid on it.
This would be a change to that, you know?
Is that recommended? Why?
Yeah. Well, it's up to the council, but this, this is a form that I use with other cities, and usually we just don't want to have the same problem that occurred in a year or two. And so part of the solution there is we've already had to go to court to bring compliance with our ordinances, and that's sufficient grounds to restrict the bidding from that particular person as not being a responsible party. So.
I get that. I just, I get all of it. I just... Was he served, he was served papers on? And how is that done? By certified mail?
Um, Royce served him at the...
Ejection.
Ball.
So that was done in person?
Yes.
So he knew it at that time?
Pardon?
He knew it at that time?
Right, and then there were multiple bailings after that by certified mail, of hearings and of the attempted taking of the ball judgment, and the judge signed off on it, so.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
Well, I mean, the judge wouldn't do that without finding it was adequate or statutory or nothing.
Right, right. So when he made the remark that he didn't know about it, because he didn't open the mail, he had been served prior to that, is what they're telling me?
Yeah, there's a, in the court file, there's a proof of service by, I'm pretty sure it was Royce.
Okay.
At, at the ball. I remember that part of it, because I would rather he served in the home, but that was just, that didn't make any legal differences, just, I was surprised.
Okay, all right, okay.
And besides, he's had, if you, if you wanted to complain about notice, there would be a certain period of time, the thirty days after the judgment was after that, you could either appeal, ask for reconsideration, or move for a judgment notwithstanding the judgment. There was a timeframe that went through there, that's why we held off for thirty days after the judgment was obtained. And we sent him a copy of the judgment too, of course. The clerk of court did too, I think. So.
So he was at the one council meeting, did he, was he aware then that he had that thirty days? I mean, I'm not questioning the legal part of it, I know that was all done correctly, I'm just, I'm just wondering, what he knew?
I, I guess I would just tell you for sure, Vicky, that yes, he knew about that, because I met with him like the weekend or the following weekend, say, within the first ten days of that thirty day period, and talked that through with him and gave him a copy of the, of the judgment.
So he understood then that he had to do something in order to stop the proceeding?
Isn't the thirty days usually put in writing also that goes somewhere in, in the writings that he served? Isn't it usually something stated in there that he can appeal and he has so many days to do that? Or not really?
Not really, but, you know, if you, if you, if you conferred with an attorney, they would say you have thirty days to appeal it.
But is that actually in the writing that, that he served, in the paperwork, anything?
Prior, no. Prior to the, taking the judgment, we sent out a notice that, that said, if you don't do something in ten days, we will take a judgment, so.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify the whole process. Thank you.
When I talked to him, like, years, last couple of years, I'm gonna do something. He kept saying he was gonna do it, but he just never got it done because he thought there was a lean against it.
Lean against it, yeah, I, yeah, I thought that that was, part of his argument was he thought he couldn't do anything or something. I just wanted to make sure he understood.
So did he just not go far enough in checking that possibility of that, that lean he thought was against it? Did he just not go far enough?
One time he told me he did. He checked with the attorney, Wall Lake, and he said that there was no leans, but that nothing ever, nothing ever happened.
And the, the one of them dealt with a, a child support issue where the child reached age.
I think the time span.
Uh, I guess the main question to the council is, this, this reads that previous owner's not eligible to bid, and what would you like to see?
You want to take it out? Remove it in? That's the question.
I think we have leave the plan in.
Yeah, I'd leave it in.
We'll leave it in.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's go back to another.
At this point.
Item C talks about, you know, no person's permitted to bid if, if they are delinquent in taxes or on, have other pending municipal charges. Item eighteen there in the middle, again, talks about removing the house within forty-five days, then within bold, it says remove the house within forty-five days. And the council would not, under any circumstances, grant an extension to the rehab period listed above.
So they can't sell the property until they tear the house down, right?
There you go. So that's the, and this is, I think, the next one too. So the buyer shall not sell, uh, transfer the above described property until the buyer has rehabbed the property in compliance with the other conditions of the sale, which is tear it down. So they, you know, they can't do that until then. Okay? And then you see, if the buyer does one, two, or three, if they fail to, to do that, or if they sell, or they attempt to sell it, title to the property shall automatically revert to and become listed in the city. And that was the last of, of the highlights that I, that I wanted to come out. Do you, anybody have any, any other questions or concerns?
Move forward. Need a motion to approve twenty twenty-five? Second?
I'll say it.
Roll call.
Boltman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Okay, twenty twenty-six is a hazard mitigation plan.
Yeah, that's.
Procedure rule?
Well, it, you know, it, it's procedural to some extent, but the city has to have this plan in, in, in order to be eligible for any potential FEMA declarations in the future. So we did have a, a committee that got together, and it was me and Bill and Royce and Jimmy and Jimmy Girls, the mayor, and we worked with the staffer from, from Region Twelve to identify the hazards and then develop this action plan, which starts on page ten. You know, it's not an extremely detailed plan about what any responses would be. What this does is, is, again, helps us out on the funding end of things. If, if it's included in our hazard mitigation plan, it's eligible for hazard mitigation funding, if that, if that would ever present itself.
And there's no guidelines to have COVID or anything in that yet?
No, you know, and that, that is interesting to, to think that it didn't even say anything about disease in here, you know? That's true.
But it will some good.
Yeah.
How often do you update this?
You gotta have a current plan in place. I think every five years.
Any questions on the mitigation plan? Don't need a motion on twenty twenty-six?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Second. Bower.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yep.
Tom.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay, twenty twenty-seven is our last, somewhere in forty?
Yep, this would hire Tiffany Oryx in the, in the campground slash park. So it's part-time, parks maintenance position, and then also has her do part-time work in the campgrounds, supplementing campground attendance, and then concession stand work. So between those, those two positions, she will come close to being a full-time person. We never guarantee anybody full-time hours, but this is, between the two, she should come, come close. You know, Tiffany is, is just, if she had graduated college recently, is just home for the summer while she awaits the start of the graduate program then next fall.
Good, good to have her.
Yep.
Got a motion to approve for, second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Boltman. Tom. Stankin.
Yes.
Bower.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, Gremlins Hick still wants pay estimate number twenty-one?
They do, and this one is...
Legit?
Oh, yeah. They, they continue to, to do the work. This pay estimate covers partial payment for seating, fencing, and some miscellaneous metals. So a lot of the fencing work is, has been done, and the seating, some of the seating work's been done, but they're proposing to do that next week. This would pay for materials. It is, it is recommended for payment.
You have that motion?
Motion, yeah, bro.
Second?
I'll say it.
Roll call.
Bower.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yep.
Tom.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Do you have a city administrator report?
Thank you. Um, just flip to page twenty real, real quick, you see the highlights of, of a proposed budget amendment. So, and this will, this will publish, not this week, but the following week, about, see that it adds, it actually adds more revenue than it does add any additional expenses. And, but you're looking at the top, there's additional revenue primarily for the catalyst grant, library grants, campground revenues, increased electric sales. Yeah, that's true. We were at, we're anticipating it at the time. And then the bottom, the expenses, there's a reduction in, in culture and recreation, that's the aquatic herbicide and harvester operations are, are less than normal. Community and economic development, there is that increase there. That is turnaround and paying out those, the costs that the catalyst expenses, and then also the four-way Main Street demolition. Little insurance savings this year, and we don't often get to, get to say that, but the insurance was less than budget. Capital projects is down. Okay, capital projects is down, but it, it just has to do with timing. We budgeted for that Fish Barrier project, that's not going to happen until next year. And then we, but we do have some additional CDBG housing rehab expenses.
How come they're not starting on the pitch down?
It, the bid's been let.
Oh.
Um, so they have a, they have a contractor, they're working through the contract right now. But the completion date on that was next April, is that?
Something like that, yeah.
And it's, it's a lengthy contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, bids usually, it better if they got a long time to do it.
Yeah.
Um, and then some additional transfers. So, anyway, that's just a, a heads up for you. You'll see that come out in the paper on the twenty-ninth. We'll hold a public hearing, the second meeting in, in May.
Is there a best guess of how many dollars we're going to lose to sales tax that we grew up on, we got through, and by this nineteen and stuff, or is there any way even, in your mind, calculated that?
I, I don't have a real good guess on that right now. The, the state has provided an estimate on road use tax that said it was down, potentially down by twenty-five percent. You know, my, the number in my mind right now is about ten percent, and then that's on, set on sales tax. Because, and it has a lot to do, of course, with, with continued sales and around Lakeview. You'd like to think that tourism has something to do with it, but just remember that all sales are, are, are considered countywide. You know, so all of the sales tax goes up to the state countywide, and then comes back to, to the entities based upon a distribution form. So it's not that Lakeview just gets our own money.
I understand that, but we, we provide most of the, the revenue, the sales tax revenue for the counties, so I, I would think you're going to have a big impact, I think. And you're going to see what tourism pays for. Maybe, maybe it's a good thing, people will see what tourism is paid for.
We went to, um, we went to Ask Lewis, you have to see the kids, see the kids. Oh, I'd get a haircut too. But anyway, they, you know, we drove all that way, three and a half hours, three and a half to four hours, and I don't think we met a half a dozen cars.
Really?
And then we come back through Ankeny, and somebody said that gas was ninety-six cents in Ankeny, and it was. Ninety-six cents a gallon. And that's because of, we heard on the news today, it's because of the traffic, or just people just aren't using.
Well, I think it'll go down some more, um, the price of gas. And it's going to have a huge economic impact, huge.
Today crude oil was minus four dol, forty-six dollars.
Yes, it was.
Because there's no place to store it. You gotta pay to get it stored.
Do you have a motion on that budget amendment?
Uh, no, they'll, they'll be formal actually, Ron. Couple other things for you. Four oh eight Main Street, the demolition of four oh eight Main Street. So you see that they've started some, some work on that, and they had initially said we're going to tear it down on Wednesday, as in this Wednesday. That's going to be postponed a week, because what they're doing is, is additional handwork on the building. So they will drop the roof down by hand, they're cutting all, all the rafters and everything, and dropping the roof down onto the second story. And that's all, that's all handwork then. And basically, the employees doing it after hours, you know, during evenings and whatnot. It's going to postpone it by about a week. So you'll see them continue to work on the roof, and then you'll also see more of that, of the front wall especially come down. You see, they took down part of that front parapet wall.
So maybe I wasn't paying close enough attention. Is it going down a week from Wednesday?
Week from Wednesday.
A week from Wednesday.
Yep.
If anybody asks, all the, the dirt, the clay in the street is, when it falls down, it doesn't bust our sideboard.
Right.
If, if, or hit a man's building.
No, he, he doesn't want to do that.
Again, related to, somewhat related to our lagoon, we heard from Larry Hauser today about, and this deals with a drainage tile out there. He has a drainage tile, just think that the drainage tile runs north, north and south along his, his west property line there, right by the sewer plant. Okay? Well, north of the sewer plant, there's this little grove of trees, and this drainage tile runs right past that little grove of trees. And he was having drainage problems out there, and had George Schmidt out there today, and they opened up the tile at a few spots, and just ended up pulling out a bunch of, a bunch of roots from these trees next door. Okay? So, and it's what, thirty feet away, I suppose?
Yeah.
So, you know, Bill and I were out there looking at this with the, with the recommendation of, well, geez, it, it looks like you could put in solid wall piping that would take care of, of the problem. Larry's preference would be just to remove the trees instead. And, and it's a, and it's a little grove of, of kind of scrubby trees, I mean, it's the, you know, environmental part of it is, is minimal. Um, it's just has, more has to do with, with who would pay to do this.
Don't think it, oh, excuse me, that still ain't going to get rid of the roots, though. The roots are gonna, you know, them trees, them are saplings, they could grow right back, and still the roots could keep going.
Well, you got something to dump down there, it kills the trees, don't it? Some chemical?
Pour, pour it on.
I thought years ago, they told me they could dump something down the drains, it would kill the trees and the roots as it went.
Oh, yeah, but it doesn't last.
Oh, does it?
No. Once he, once the water flushes it out, they grow right back on.
So did they find the broken tile, that?
Well, it wasn't, nothing, I don't think anything was broken, it was full of roots.
Usually when we had a broken tile, you, the water would come up to the top of the ground, run across the top of the ground.
I don't know what the deal was. He'd said it was wet down there, but, um, you know, really what it amounts to is, is he, Larry would like these, these trees removed, and he talked with, we're just about removing, about removing those trees. Cost to remove the trees would be fifteen hundred bucks. Um, I'm, if the trees are gone, that's fine. It's just a question of who should have to pay for them, you know?
George Schmidt then put that on?
Well, this is just him talking, and this just occurred today. So Navi would dig a hole up the hill a little bit, push him in the hole for fifteen hundred bucks. But, and, and Larry said he, he would split cost.
Sixteen forty?
I, I don't, I don't know that we want to, you gotta be careful about whether you want to do anything. It just, it just sets some precedence for, for future stuff, you know?
Well, it's not benefiting the city to pay for anything. So.
Don't think yes.
I, I, I'm in the mindset that, I mean, why should the taxpayers flip the bill to approve somebody's property?
We have, we have any liability on that of being our trees?
I don't know if we have liability or something, I guess that's, but.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head. I mean, that's, that's the problem with tile and trees, they just get together all the time.
Are they, there are trees?
There are, they're on, they're on city property. But just know that we'll also get this, we will get this same argument half dozen times a year in regards to sanitary sewer. You know, people have, will have problems with their sanitary sewers and those city trees out in the parking, you know, they, they claim that that's causing, causing problems with that. Um, if you, if you want to participate with Larry, I think it's because you want to. I don't know that we have any other obligations.
Doesn't he know we're a tree community?
And yes, we are.
John, the trees were there before he put that tile in.
Oh, really? Well, then you should have put in plastic then.
All right, I think. The tile is plastic, but perforated. Oh, okay. That rolled, it comes in big rolls.
Sure.
Yeah. Probably what, five years old? He's got seven, Scott. It's been that long already?
Yeah.
I remember he had to pull deeper elbow across there.
He knew the trees were there when he put the tile in.
I've worked with other contractors, and usually they go buy trees, they put solid in for that reason.
It look like anybody wants to help.
I guess, does it, does it cause anybody great concern if Larry removes our trees?
No.
No.
Well, it could probably do it, so that's fine.
If he's going to be able to farm over it, then I guess not, no.
It's our property, so he's not farming over it.
Oh, okay.
It's.
Plenty random, too.
That would make for an interesting discussion. Now, we're not going to run sewer planning out there, you know? One other kind of lagoon easement related thing deals with Nora and, and the access easement that we gave them. Okay? So Doug Heineken and then Nora, and Eric Schultz, they, they get to access across the lagoon property to get into their field that's to the south. Okay? And we have a legally defined access, ingress egress easement, but it, it has them following the top of the dike to get, to get out there, and, and then takes an access road down there. And they're real concerned about, about that. You know, as we're out there looking around, we, we asked them to come out and look at the specific location of a gate to make sure that, that this is what they wanted. You know, as they're looking at the easement and know that it's on, on top of the berm, they would like to explore some other options, which is, is not, not a big deal. You know, because if they can come down our east fence line and pass the south fence line, um, and that, that would be fine, they can have access that way. And we just changed the legal description or add to the legal, I guess, Dave, if you haven't done it, just add to it, so the other one stays there too.
Right.
But, anyway, so they would just have access that way. They just, I wanted something more in, in writing, and then had a couple extra stipulations that we can't agree to on that, about use of a gate to access their land and, and wanted some, some definition on, on who's responsible for restoration if they caused problems. You know, if they disturbed the, the ground as they're crossing, crossing it, because this, the access down the fence line will not, will just be an unimproved easement, they'll just be driving over the grass. So, but it's, I think it's just a matter of getting a, a new legal definition.
So they, so they could tear up our grass, is that what else?
That's their, you know, their concern is that if they tear up the grass, they don't want to be responsible. And I think it usually works the other way around when you're giving easement, but.
So, Dave, what do you recommend?
Well, just putting that, it'd be thirty foot from the fence line, basically, and it would keep them off the top of the berm. So there's a little bit of give and take that way, too. There's a couple of other things about the gate that we got to get straightened out, but they're only going to run that, I would assume, run that farm equipment across there twice a year, and, you know, planting and harvesting, and I, I just can't. If it's grass, I guess we could put something in there, but I think it'd be more trouble than it's worth, try and have them reseed it and then tear it up again the next spring, so.
But it's a grass mix that's kind of not, doesn't have to be mowed, right?
Right. Right, so then we did make a.
It's lawn grass.
Yeah. Defined the type of, of grass mix that's going in there. The grass mix is actually the same mix that the DOT would use for ditches. Okay? So it doesn't necessarily need to be mowed. And we can have that, uh, discussion as we see what, see what it looks like out there. But this grass, you know, you can just let it go?
So the easement that we're giving them, you're going to adjust the easement?
Yeah, we're going to do it. Yeah.
So you're going to make some changes in the easement and then if there's destruction of the property, is, then do, can you address that later or once we agree to this easement, we're done?
If we agree to an easement without addressing it, we're done. I guess, at least I didn't consider it a problem based upon the fact that it's just, it's not like we have growing crop there or anything else, yeah.
They all use it a couple of times a year anyway.
Would, would we be going there with any city equipment to get through there? I'm just saying if we get some big equipment with a lot of tracks and stuff, I mean, would we have anything that we as the city that have to have equipment go through that part, you know, where it'd be a lot of ruts or anything, I'm just.
We have access to that barrier tower of the crypt, Scott?
We do. Oh, yeah, we have an easement.
That's why the gate's where it's at?
Yeah, yeah.
It's our way, huh? So we would just be going down the driveway and then going out the gate? Okay?
Then you'd think they can make the turn on the top of the berm.
Yeah, I just, I don't mind them not driving farm equipment on the top of that.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just, yeah, I don't have, I don't, I don't think there's a problem. I'm just, you know, I, if we tear something up, you know, somebody's going to sit a rain or going to move to a different field, you know, I'm, you know, that's just.
But it's, but it's our land, not theirs, so I just think that we rely on the city attorney to make the.
I'll take a look at that, but. They're not, just, just from experience, if it's wet, they're not going to be putting their stuff through there anyway.
Well, if it's sick, then everybody would get it out.
Yeah, I mean, what?
No, that's fine, I, I, as long as we don't have to worry about city equipment, you know, we get a lot of ruts or, you know, just happened to be that time we need to get through there, that's all.
I think I should look at the language from the other way, which is if they damage it, we don't have to repair it.
Yeah.
But I think what he's talking about is are we going to have a problem getting equipment in and out because of their use? Isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, only if they do what you're saying, why do you wish to run it up or, I guess we could throw some rock in there if we needed to. I, I haven't been out to look at it, but.
That's what I was going to say. Yeah, okay, that's fine, that's, that's, they should, just make sure we just talk about it.
I'm more worried about them catching the fence.
Yeah.
Something they don't see that's back there, that type of thing.
It's about nine o'clock at night.
Yeah, right. So we might have something in there about that.
Okay.
If they damage the fence, that would be kind of pricey, so that's something we need to look at.
Okay.
Uh, a couple of other things for you. The community club is starting to think about, about summer events and, and what status is going to be with that. They had a meeting last week and then actually they will meet again next Monday. And I would speculate that by next Monday, you know, they're going to know a lot more about any potential, uh, opening of the, of the economy and whatnot. You know, our first big, uh, summertime events are on June sixth, sip and sample and, uh, first concert that night. But having said that, the kind of the first summer kickoff is two weeks before that. You know, it's the twenty-third of May for that, and that's, uh, Memorial Day weekend. So just be, we'll be talking about this a lot more about what the status is with camping. There'll be a huge deal that impacts that. And, um, and then anything dealing with special events, which would be garage sale. The other big one though would be farmer's market and when they're able to do farmer's markets.
Could you put something on the website, some kind of a blip about COVID nineteen and that some of these things, not only the events, but like the campground being open dates and, and the farmer's market or the sip and sample, whatever it might be, that the, because I know I've gotten calls about, it says, the website says that campground's open April fifteenth. And I said, well, I think it, it means that they can take reservations on April fifteenth. So I just wondered if you could put a little banner or something on there that says depending on the governors.
Connie's been putting stuff out just to check her schedule. We didn't, right, any of the events, we just said, check her.
Yeah, I think with Facebook she has been, but I just wondered about the website itself. Take a look at it.
Then my last question for, for the council on this, uh, deals with our subsequent meeting coming up. You know, and when would, when would we put the design standard issue on the council agenda?
I want to know how long a first reading can sit.
Okay.
I don't know that there is a limitation on that.
I don't know.
I mean, I was going to sit down and do the, do the math and I haven't done it because I didn't know we were even going to discuss this, but our first P and Z meeting concerning this was what, September? I believe, I have a paper, September, which meant it had been brought up at the council earlier. Then it went to the P and Z, then it came back to the council, then it went back to the P and Z. We have had at least six public meetings about this. And I don't think we can put this off forever based on COVID nineteen. It isn't like these people haven't presented their case and it isn't that we haven't had a lot of public meetings. And, and most of the people that are, that are here voicing their opinions on that, not all of them, but a lot of them were at the P and Z meetings, you know, besides the council meetings. So I'm just saying there's been a lot of public participation.
We line up around the next council agenda. Second reading?
I think we should, I just think that if, if, if it had never been brought up in public and they had not had the opportunity to provide their input, I would totally agree. But I think they've had numerous opportunities to provide their input. Numerous.
It's going to be on the next agenda, is that what?
I guess I just want to know whether to put it on the, on the next agenda or not. Cause the, the topic again, or the, the concept was be able to, uh, interact with, with the, with the folks and have them.
That's my whole point, we have interacted with them on at least six to eight public forums. This COVID stipulations could go on.
It really could, that's, that's my, that's really my question.
Could go on all summer.
Yeah.
And I think we asked the P and Z to do a lot of work on it and they did their work on it and.
Now it's time for us to do one.
It, yeah, I think they deserve some action on this. That's my opinion.
Then we'll give it to them. Get them behind us.
Hey, it's going to be on the next agenda though, and in this, unless they are otherwise.
I don't think it should be on the agenda yet, that's my opinion.
So we're going to put it on to get past this. Yep? We have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll, I'll second it.
Local.
So who, who had motion?
Roy.
It's whining.
Kevin Stankin?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.